I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, September 6, 2023. The first order of business tonight is to reorganize the board, which is done every year.
Make a motion, we'll leave it the way it is.
Second.
You're not getting out of it.
All right, we have a motion to have the board chair and vice chair remain the same for the next year. We have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Forget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The first agenda item is a public hearing for Donald and Catherine Disjarden, case number 2023-1214, Shady Lane. The date of the application is July 31. The certified mailing list was returned and everybody was notified. And the following was posted in the town hall and also in the Telegram and Gazette, and it read as follows. "The Town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, September 6, 2023, in Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass., to hear the following application. Donald and Catherine Disjarden are requesting a variance pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10 and Section 9.2 of the Douglas bylaws for relief of Section 3.4.4 of the Douglas zoning bylaws, to remove an existing non-conforming shed and to build a new 24-by-24 garage within the setbacks in an RA zone. The property is located at 14 Shady Lane, MAP 158, Parcel 22. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass." Okay, is the applicant or their representative here? Would you like to join us?
I'm Dan Disjarden from Dan's Carpentry. This is my parents' property, and we're looking for a variance, as you mentioned in the write-up, to remove an existing shed which has fallen apart. It's beyond repair. It doesn't have good foundation. We positioned the new garage to be the same distance as the existing shed from the neighbor's property. We didn't encroach any further than the house is towards the street. The house is 31.5. We're keeping the garage at 32.6, and we tried to position it outside of the 100-foot buffer zone to the reservoir.
Anything else you'd like to add at this time?
From the way the property is positioned, we feel it's the only place to put a garage that makes sense on the property. So that's why we positioned it where we did.
Okay. Any board members have any question for the applicant? Questions?
Right up. I was over there Saturday, I think it was Saturday, I'm sure. The shed is in fact falling apart. I want to take a look at it, and it doesn't seem to be any trouble as far as I'm concerned on building a larger-sized garage. As he said, the 32 and the 10.2 of the property line is sufficient enough for me.
Is there any reason that you didn't go to conservation other than cost?
So we just tried to stay within, to go into the 100-foot buffer zone? No, because I guess we felt that staying, like, we kept the first, the line that's already closest to the street, we stayed at that and kept it at 24-by-24, not to encroach. If you go much further down, like, as you turn through the driveway, the garage doors would be too close to the house to be able to go in.
So your garage doors facing, looking at it from the street, it's facing on the right-hand side? It's not on the street side?
Correct, it's facing the right-hand side. So the street, it actually drops down in elevation from the street down to the surface of the garage, probably at least 15 feet in elevation down the hill, so you couldn't face the garage doors towards the street.
Okay, so if you pushed it back any further, you'd be backing into the side of the house.
Correct, yes. If we went any closer, away from the street, towards the lake essentially, you wouldn't have much room. You would back out and be up against the house, basically.
The driveway is way on the left-hand side over here on the property, and it comes around, you can get out this way too, but there's one big parachute. So the garage is facing, of course, where it says, "For basic garage," so...
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none. Is there anybody in the room that would like to comment on this case? Okay. All right. Well, what's the board's pleasure? Do you want to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Forget to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is closed. Will the board like to make a decision tonight?
Sure. I move to approve the garage and the application, using the plans that we got here, and it's number 2023-1214, Shady Lane.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Forget to approve the plan as submitted, showing the garage setback 32.6 feet from the street front lot line and then 10.2 from the side lot line.
Can I just add that it's a plan drawn by Jarvis Land Survey dated July 5, 2023?
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Your variance is granted. We'll get it drafted and to the town clerk as soon as it's feasible.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Good night. All right. We have a couple minutes before we can start...
Seven minutes, I think.
Before we can start the next hearing, but...
You've got some vouchers.
Yep, we have some vouchers that can be signed.
You also have the fees, good one.
Yeah. So the decisions from the last meeting are in here to be signed, as well as a couple of vouchers. I believe Jen sent the decisions to everybody. There you go. I don't know. Vice chair?
Yeah.
So the answer would be yes. I don't like this, I'm not keeping it. I don't like it, I'm not keeping it.
Oh, I might have another one.
You know what I mean, Mike?
Yeah, you missed this one.
Good.
Just keep me on my toes.
We still got five minutes.
No, we don't.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do. It's only 10.
Can't tell if I mean it?
Yes, I'll sign that one, too.
Hang on. Yeah. The next case was advertised to start at 7:15, and we can't start prior to the date, time that it was advertised, so just have to wait a few minutes.
And I'm using up as much time as I can just signing these things.
Yeah. I'll have to stay out to assign them.
Don't buy me breakfast.
If you make him stay late, I will buy you breakfast. Oh, jeez.
What's this thing, that's it?
Oh, that was, yeah. We'll keep that.
It'll come back in this.
Just letting us know that there's an application in front of the planning board for gravel removal.
There's a whole bunch of lines. Look at Dan's writing. Dan takes the top.
Take it out of there.
Thank you. Yeah.
Note there, "left."
That's, uh, that could happen. They've been holding the rumor out of there.
Okay. Yes. I'm using, see? I thought you had them. Yep. I'm gonna get it. No problem. I'm just looking for those two. So we put in a certified plot plan on the end? Most certified.
Mm-hmm.
Use it.
Yeah. We could put that in the decision.
You put a note on, uh, just in general?
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Thank you, John. I'll put this in there. Yep. Nope. Went to a cookout Saturday at this people's house in Auburn. The guy's there and he's like, "You're from Douglas? You know Ron Fortune?" I'm like, "Is that a good thing or a bad thing?" He said, "I used to work with him."
Fun, okay?
Yeah. Sure it's company, huh? Yep. So... Actually, the guy lives here down the villages, and then he lives in Auburn or Worcester.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Just bought down there. It's, uh, last winter was his first.
Still growing. They sell like $300 a month, plus the unitary.
Yep.
I like where I am for this. I want to say it's aged, it's matured, the trees are larger, that kind of thing.
Yep.
I got one big tree next to my house, flowers, twxy, pink flowers. Beautiful, absolutely beautiful. My neighbors take pictures of them and send them to me. I'm gonna climb a lot.
Okay.
It's time.
Yep. All right, the next case tonight is a public hearing for Jonathan Whipple, case number 2023-1388 West Street. The date of the application is August 16, 2023. And the following was posted in the town hall and also advertised in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, and it read as follows. "The Town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:15 on Wednesday, September 6, 2023, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass., to hear the following application. Jonathan Whipple is requesting a variance pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10 and Section 9.2 of the Douglas bylaws for relief of Section 3.4.4 of the Douglas zoning bylaws for a garage built within the front setback in a VR zone district. The property is located at 88 West Street, MAP 161, Parcel 7. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass." Who's the applicant or their representative here?
Yes.
Would you like to join us?
So I'm Jonathan Whipple, and I haven't been in front of this board, but I'm thinking this lot is cursed. So I brought receipts with me that I'll leave with the board, but I had insight engineering stake the house, and they charged me $1,000 to do that. And then my concrete form guys came in, and they charged me $13,000 to set the foundation, and both of them saying they did the right thing. But as you see from the map, I have my setbacks in the back, I meet them on the sides. On one corner of the, if you're in the road, the right-hand corner of the house is off five inches.
Actually, less than that, it's only three tenths.
I'm sorry?
It's only three tenths, so it's actually less than five.
It's less than five inches. But when Ken said to me, you know, "Don't drop any lumber till you do an asphalt," I never had done that before, so I said, "Yeah, all right, I'll give you an asphalt." I had no clue that it was going to be like this.
So it's his fault?
No, 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 the same.
Actually, I probably would go along with that.
I would, I would second that.
He should have saw that.
You should have saw this.
You should have saw this.
Okay.
So it is cursed, huh?
I'm thinking so.
Now, this is for a garage.
It's for a house.
It's for a house, okay. It was advertised for a garage.
That was just a typo.
Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to present to the board at this time?
No, just the receipts that I, you know, wasn't just doing it, I tried to do it professionally, so I...
Give me, yeah, I'll get it, Chairman. Thank you.
All right, is there any board members that have any questions for the applicant?
No, I can sympathize with them, I've been there myself. If you're off a couple feet, it'd be a different story, but maybe three or four inches.
All right. Anybody else?
No, it's just unfortunate.
Okay. All right, is there anybody in the room that would like to speak on this matter? So you just need to identify yourself, name and address for the minute taker.
Jonathan Given, 92 West Street. And is it going to make a penning change on the piece of paper where it says garage? Because that's what confused me, that, you know, I'm not, you know, that off by three, four inches from the street, yeah, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that. I just want to make sure that we're not putting another building on and not correcting the record.
Right.
So it's a house that we're creating to, for the variance.
Right.
And not, you know, have some, and I certainly don't want to say a loophole, I'm not trying to, I just want to make sure that the record is clear that it's for the house and not for any other building.
Okay. If it's approved, we'll make sure that the decision clearly spells out that it's for a single-family home.
Right, as it was, as approved from the environmental board and whatever else.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, on the second plan that he submitted with this, it's for the septic system, it says proposed one-bedroom dwelling on the plan, where the plot plan's only saying existing foundations.
Yeah.
He did submit another drawing that says that it is a residence.
Okay. It's just that what I've received in the mail, for the garage, I did come down and check the plan, and the person behind the counter told me it was just what the issue was. So I have a problem, I just want to make sure that the record is set.
Yep. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this application? Ma'am?
I'm Shelley Foley, I live at 89 West Street. It's across the street from the lot, and I'm all for this house. I would rather see a pretty little house sitting there than what I'm looking at now.
Okay.
It's been a while.
Yeah, when I bought that property, it was a vacant lot, we'd impressed it, and then John came along, and I'm like, "Okay, I'll go with the house." So I'm all for it also.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak on this case? Yep, ma'am?
Susan Chilton, we're from 96 West Street, and we were against this house being approved years ago. So when we got the letter about a garage, that really threw us off. We're even more against a separate building. So is there any way we could get revised letters that say, you know, an adjustment to the residence?
It'll be in the actual decision. It'll reference a residence versus a garage.
Because I'm, we are dead against any separate building being put up, any additional building.
So is that gentleman sitting over there? Because it would become the primary use, and a garage is an accessory use to a residential structure, so he wouldn't be allowed to put in just a garage.
Okay, and also, any additional structure that was put up would block our vision, our line of sight coming out of our driveway as to oncoming traffic up the hill.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak on this? Sir?
Yes, I'm David Mulvare, I live at 90 West Street, right next door to the lot.
Okay.
I just, I just want to confirm what everyone else is saying. There will not be a garage, correct?
Correct.
No, the application actually is for a single family, and he did submit a plan that shows it, but it was a misprint in the paperwork, but it clearly will be a single family. Ma'am?
We're right next to it, so obviously I...
Okay, you just have to state your name and address, please. You just have to state your name and address.
Kathleen Mulvare, 90 West Street.
Okay, thank you.
Mind if I show them this?
Yeah, that's fine.
The concern that I've had right from the beginning was where all the water was going to go, and if they were going to put a garage in, we're going to have more problems, but it's not a garage, it's a house. I'm sure that may be, because I always flipped, I said, "How could they put a garage? What is this going to be for a house?" But it makes me feel better.
Yeah, great.
One last thing. Every time it rains out, I watch a river go down the road.
This guy?
It does, because of the driveway to the back set house, property?
The one that goes up, oh, next to it?
Way up. If that driveway was correctly burned, there would be no water going down that driveway and into that gully, which probably isn't even wetlands. It is man-made wetland from the water coming down the street. So, and it's time to clean up my driveway because the gravel's all there.
You may want to talk to the town superintendent to help you, you know?
My parents owned a lot 50 years ago, and then my uncle bought it from them, I bought it from my uncle. So when the Brady's put in the driveway, that was not wetlands. In fact, we had to take down, David will say, the big dead oak trees we had to take down because when they put the driveway in, they didn't put pipes.
So...
So when all, you know, when all the water runs down the hill on West Street, pulls up in that driveway, so it became a wetland, so it is a wetland. But it wasn't when I was a kid.
I see.
It was actually a horse barn was there. The horse barn was there, and it was just a flow from the top of West Street all the way down. When they put that driveway in, no fault of theirs, at the time, it wasn't required. So they put the driveway in, now a whole lot of stops there.
Yeah, if there's any questions about that, you could speak to the highway superintendent. Unfortunately, we're here just for zoning.
And I put a set of hay bales there to try to help.
I saw that, and it did help.
It wasn't required, but I just put it there because, as Shelley said, when the water comes down West Street, it just goes right in the driveway.
Okay. All right, is there anybody else that would like to be heard?
I, hopefully, I can get an answer on this. This has nothing to do with Mr. Whipple's property, but across from him, how do I find out what the plan is for that piece of property of...
Oh, 80, I'm 89, they're 87.
Yeah, 87 West Street, there's...
The two lots, three lots, but you gotta go to...
Yeah, you'd have to go to...
Go to your...
Community Development or...
What are the Sephazosses over there, they'll know what it is. I think I know who you're speaking about.
Yeah.
The house. Yeah, you gotta go there.
Okay.
Yeah, you can go to online to find it.
Okay, thanks.
GIS map.
What do they call it?
The protest.
Protest.
Yep.
All over the place.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else? If not, we can close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Bombara to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is now closed. The board like to make a decision tonight?
I would like to make a motion to approve the variance for 2023 dash, oh, no, dash 13. I was looking at the wrong one. Dash 13, 88 West Street, for the front yard setback.
Okay. Second. All right, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Bombara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
What I didn't note in there was he has built, but seeing that he's already submitted one, you should be fine on that.
The decision will be drafted and given to the town clerk, and it sits with the town clerk for 21 days, so...
So I just want to say I want to thank my neighbors, and I want to thank the board because I know sometimes it's a little more complex, so I'm just looking for a couple inches, but I know there's legalities involved, so I just want to thank you.
You're welcome.
Glad we could help you.
And thank my neighbors, too, and I'm a good neighbor.
Yeah, sure you are.
Time will tell. Time will tell.
You're going to reserve comment?
Two minutes.
Thank you.
Three weeks of crazy acres.
I know.
You get sick, I'm glad to hear you're feeling well. You know how things go around in this town.
Yeah.
I can't see any minutes, do you?
No.
Okay.
Stephanie probably hasn't gotten caught up on it, she just leaves that as a standard on there.
Okay.
Wait for John to come back from the bathroom.
Do we need to?
Again?
It didn't take long for that warehouse to go up.
It's going to slow down quick.
Oh, yeah?
It's, uh, that's Lake CRG inside.
I didn't hear you.
That's Lake CRG inside.
And they got waterfront property.
Hmm. Jeez, I just...
They got, they got some rail issues with that water.
Yeah.
So what's the storage tanks full? The storage tanks underneath full? That million gallons of water?
This is just water that came in, it's been held inside by the foundation. Now they put the roof over it, so they're not getting any rain, and the roof is...
Drill a hole and let it fill in the tanks underneath, and just plug it.
Have to go through the foundation, then they have to... Have to go through the foundation. Then they have to trench everything inside. They haven't even been able to take the braces off the panel walls.
Find the water too deep.
It's cool.
Yeah, they couldn't inspect 32 columns of that.
Jeez. I read in the computer that, actually, Amazon has six buildings in Massachusetts that are completely built and not being used.
Not using them, right.
I just heard today that they want to travel.
Yeah, oh, it's a huge one, childhood. That one's big.
My kids toured that building. That's what I heard.
That is big.
They committed, overcommitted too fast.
Yeah.
What are you talking about? All these buildings are building?
Yeah.
All the Amazon stuff, yeah.
You got to get the infrastructure first because they need other places.
Yeah, but a lot of them.
Economy takes a tank.
A lot of them are completely built and not in use.
Yeah, I thought about that a lot.
The next agenda item is a public hearing for Beth Longren.
Lonigan.
Lonigan. Case number 2023-14, 278 South, I'm sorry, Northwest Main Street. Date of the application is August 16th. The following was posted in the town hall and also published in the Whistler Telegram Gazette. And it reads as follows: "The Town of Douglas, zoning board of appeals, will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:30 on Wednesday, September 6, 2023, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. To hear the following application: Beth."
Lonigan.
Lonigan, okay. Beth Lonigan is requesting a variance pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10 and Section 9.2 of the Douglas Bylaws for road frontage and lot area relief under dimensional regulations, Appendix B, to build a single-family home in an RA zone district. Property is located at 278 Northwest Main Street, MAP 159, Parcel 8. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass.
And just for the record, I asked how to pronounce the name. I wasn't smart.
Good. All right. Margaret, you're representing this case?
Okay, for the record, Margaret Bacon, Civil Site Engineering. And I'm here representing the Lonigans regarding their existing vacant lot out there on Northwest Main. Everybody have an idea of roughly where this is?
Yes.
So it's, it's an existing vacant lot, wooded lot. And as the chairman said, it's pre-existing, non-conforming. It doesn't meet the area requirements. It only has 24,000 square feet and not the 90,000 square feet. And the frontage is only a hundred feet, not 200 feet, which is required for RA zones. But this yellow line here is the zoning setback. And you can see that the, the house you're proposing can fit within the zoning setback. We did per test up there. We, we've got a septic design up in the, between the house and the road that'll fit up there. And then we actually did a lot of grading and located adjacent wells. This is the first step on the process to getting this permitted. If variance is allowed for this property, then the next step would be the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission.
Okay. We did have a correspondence from the Highway Department. Did you see a copy of this, Margaret?
No.
Okay. Pass that, Margaret. Anybody else get a copy?
Yeah, you can have that.
Oh, no, I, yeah, I'll get that one back. I don't know about anybody else, but maybe they should get on the same page and get it on paper so that Highway Superintendent is completely on board.
Unfortunately, this has been an extremely wet season, so it's brought this attention to everybody's.
That area right there, there's an area pond on, on Northwest Main Street that's been a poor contention for years. Residents down below have concerns with water going down to their property. I did also mention to Adam when I was talking, talking about this road runoff potential problem here with regards to the septic system being right up to, if not into, the right-of-way of the road. With the breakout and stuff, is that a downward slope to the road or is that?
No, it, everything, everything flows, goes this way. And I do show the breakout, but there is no grading there. It's just to show that we meet that elevation requirement for a septic. So, so this is lower than that. See, I didn't have the breakout at 632. That just demonstrates that I meet that. Not that I'm grading in the right-of-way, but I have to have that elevation to meet the breakout.
So that elevation change from the road down to there, how much of an elevation change is down to that ditching field?
Well, it's 632, yeah.
It's 633 here. Yeah, 633. And then I have, over the system, I've got a. 634. Yeah, so over the, over the first, because these trench are stepped. There's three trenches stepped.
First trench is a foot high.
Yeah, so the first one is.
But then it drops, the road just, the land's just dropping off.
The existing road elevation versus the start of your breakout. So the drop-off probably.
So the contour right here going across Northwest Main Street is 634, okay? My breakout is 63250. So that tells me that I meet breakout for Title V. I'm not doing any grading up on the road. It just tells me that I meet that elevation. So we're up here at 630, what did I say, 634? Yeah, 634. And then over the trench is 634. And then there's a, a little, this will get swaled, so any water coming off the road is then going to come down either side of the system. But I don't think there's any water that comes off the road here. I think per that letter, it's coming down the driveway. Is that correct?
No, the, the water comes out, if you, Douglas Hillway is down the street just a little bit. You come up from Douglas Hillway heading towards the causeway, you've got an area in there that's specifically a pond, which is right beside this lot.
Yeah.
It's, I don't know the gentleman's name that lives down there. They have issues with the water going down there. It's been burned up over time with the crushed home and stuff. You can go down and see it at any time. Any rain, it forms up there. The concern is that it's the house. It might be redirected going down into that lot, also.
It's always been the problem at Douglas Hillway with all the water. That gentleman that owns that property you're talking about.
The road itself tips to that side.
But you draw the drain from, the drain's on the very top going right to that, the other side of the street.
Yeah.
They go underneath and come up in a culvert on that side.
I know, but it's just washing out. It would be easier for them to take, this is a town now. I live up there. And I still have a problem because I got a town drain on my, on my lot. And I mean, it's only a six-inch pipe and it's down to a four. And I put it in a culvert when I first bought it. But still, we've got water problems on that side of the street, my side of the street. It'd be really easy because the direct, where the water comes from my house, it's from not, the new houses have been up there. It comes through the yard of the neighbor. Anyway, it is to put another drain from that point on all the way down to spillway. Can't dump it in the lake, put it in spillway. That's, I mean, that's my, you know, I can fight this problem all day because my neighbor and I talk about it all the time, so.
That's outside of my purview of where it can be. I think that's between the Highway Department and above us to that property.
How would you address the, how would you address the concern of the Highway Department?
Well, I guess, like I said, this is the first I saw this letter, so yeah, I would want to go out there and kind of take a look and get a better understanding of what his issues are and actually go out there when it's raining and really see what's going on. And then I could probably come up with some type of a design or do something to prevent, so that we're not making it worse. Whatever the issue is, I, I just don't fully understand everything yet until I go out there and take a look at it.
Right. The, the hesitancy that I have is because we've had such a big problem with other properties throughout the town, so.
Oh, yeah.
Now everybody's really paying attention to it and we don't typically get something like that from the Highway Department. They're probably tired of answering the phone, is why.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So at least like to, might me personally, I'd like to see that addressed to see how you're going to handle the stormwater and make sure that now we're going to cause another problem.
Well, the best thing I can do, but my experience, the best time for me is when, next time we get a big rain event, I go out there and take a look at what's really going on. And then, then I can come back to the board and see what we have for potential solution regarding this construction.
Go ahead, Lon.
But the water, the water that comes up off of that hill, what is it, Altusus? Who's on the, who's on the bottom there on the, on the, if you're coming from your place down on the right, at spillway side?
Right.
Right?
The last house?
Yeah, that, that was, that was piped into the pond there by the town.
Yeah.
And if, if that water's going on their property, then they, the town should channel that down to where it's, the other, connected to the.
Yeah, right now, the drain you're talking about goes from one side of the street to the reservoir itself. And what they should be doing is putting it in spillway.
Yeah.
That's the new law.
But we're not here to tell the Highway Department or the engineer what to do.
Yeah.
But I, I do think it would be prudent to maybe continue it for a month.
That'd be fine.
Let Margaret meet with the Highway Superintendent. If they put their heads together and come up with a plan, that would be.
So I guess there's, yeah, two issues then. One is there, the, the street drainage, there's issues up here. And then we also want to make sure when this thing gets constructed, I'm not creating any problems for any of the neighbors.
And I think that's what the concern is of the Highway Department is that they've identified that there's a problem up there. They don't want to see you contribute to it. You make it worse than what it is. I think that's all they're saying. One minute. I was pointing to something behind you guys.
Oh, okay. So, so they're saying there's already a problem coming down?
Yeah, they, they said there's an issue down in that area.
Sure.
So they just want to make sure that we don't contribute to all, the applicant doesn't contribute to it.
Yeah.
So that's all.
Okay.
Was there somebody who wanted to speak?
Yes, that gentleman there. Yeah, I was going to get.
Go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Beyond 250 Northwest Main. We've already gone through the town. They've supposedly, when Bill Penteck was here, the engineers turned around and put a drain in and all this other stuff, and they've never done nothing with the problem. You go up into the, the housing development across the street, there's a detention pond on the right-hand side. I've been up there and it's pouring rain. If there's a garden home worth of water going into there, you're doing good. That's true. There's problems there, there's problems there.
The drainage issue up there, I mean, we're replacing our driveway and filling it in like once a year or better because of the water issues coming off of the street up above that they've never, the, the town department is very well aware of it. He was standing in the drain one time when they came by. So to add more water onto our property and the property that abuts Anderson, which abuts them, we, you know, we're already soaked, so to add another water problem, we would not be happy with it at all.
Well, we're the zoning board, not the, not the Highway Department, so. And that's why we're asking them to meet with the Highway Superintendent. Hopefully, they can minimize.
These issues with them, it shows the town has not enough time to turn around and try to resolve that problem.
So maybe add what we've already been dealing with.
Yeah, that would be, have to deal with the Highway Department.
There's an issue up there.
So that needs.
So all we're trying to do is, their project will not correct your issue.
No.
Those two aren't connected. No, I know. So if you'd let me finish, I would have said that. So what we're looking to do is make sure it doesn't contribute to it. That, that's what the Highway Department's saying, that's all. So that's what Margaret's going to look at. She'll come back with her professional opinion as to how she's going to deal with the stormwater management of that particular piece of property. Not the neighborhood, but that particular piece of property.
What is your address? 250 Northwest Main.
250?
Okay. So, let's see, our next meeting is what, October?
Got it right here. Fourth.
Fourth, okay. All right, so the board, would you like to continue the meeting till?
Yes, that'd be the right thing to do.
Yep. Okay, can I have a motion on that?
Yeah, can I have any questions for us? Give them a throw to see, to see if they have any question for us.
Well, they got representation here, so.
Make a show.
Yep. All right, so.
I'm making a motion to continue the, I'm getting a document number, sorry. 2023. 2023 dash 14 until October 4th. You're not going to say their last name?
No. Okay. So, could you pass that down to Margaret? Margaret, this is just a standard, if we extend it by 30 days, it's giving us another 30 days to make a decision, not that we need it.
Yeah.
But that's.
So I'm just signing this?
Yeah, well, I think you have to fill it out.
Fill it out, I'm going to.
You have a representative.
So a lot of the stormwater is obviously going to get addressed through the Conservation Commission process also.
Yep. Well, if we hadn't got a correspondence from Highway.
Are you on?
Well, I, we were waiting for this meeting first before I filed with the Board of Health and Conservation Commission. But I might just file with the Conservation Commission in the next month too, since it's going to address a lot of the same stuff.
You should, because a lot of times we'll hold up our decision until we know what Conservation wants because if we tell you, you can have it there, and then they say to move it, now you got a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but on the other end too, though.
Chasing yourself.
You spend a lot of money to file with these other boards and then it's just say we got denied here, then.
I think the only issue is just making sure that the Highway Superintendent is.
Managing the stormwater to make sure you don't contribute to the neighborhood.
Am I right? I don't.
Maybe you, maybe you'll bring attention to the neighborhood and they'll look at the problem that's ongoing.
Okay.
No promises. I was just saying maybe. She's looking at me.
I'm just laughing because I know it hasn't happened in the multiple times we've tried to.
20 years.
Thank you, yes.
Many years.
Fortunately, I wasn't here 20 years ago on this board, so I can't be blamed.
I can say, less is more, they say. Anyway.
Do you need this form back right now?
Yes, please.
So we're asking for a continuance of the hearing, correct?
Yes.
To, I'm sorry.
October 4th.
Okay.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you have a copy of that letter from Adam?
I got, I got a copy.
Yeah, I went to that.
I believe I do.
And may I help you to reach out to him?
I will.
To Adam and?
I will. Yeah, yeah. And like I say, that's a big rainstorm. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Yep.
Okay, the, Ken, do we want to talk about North Brown? Just an update there?
They just, as you can see by the pictures, they've been put along, they've got some side of the controls they've got to get taken care of. I haven't been up there in a while, honestly. They have another application in for above the 1012. Everything up there that they've got there is either sold or. They've been doing a good job of regenerating extra soils out of there. I have a question I'm going to ask them with regards to down where Compass Point and Nautical Way meet. And they left the asphalt in there just for a turnaround at this point until they continue through. But I noticed on the backside, they brought a lot of material over there and backfilled that backside. So I have a question with regards to, I don't think there's any houses supposed to be there. And if so, they just put the material without compaction or anything else, and that's not the point. As far as the rest of the settlements, he had told me he's going to bring a sweepper if I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, you said that last meeting.
Yeah. I'll have, I'll have a call. I'll put a call in to. I'll have a, I'll have a call, I'll put a call into Neil Rebecky and push him to get these roofs swept up and get the stuff cleaned up.
I went through there before the last meeting, and they had quite a bit of stockpiled material, tailings and all that, still there or is that disappearing?
So the old pile that's off the right-hand side of.
All in the final phase.
Yeah, Nautical Way, that's not gonna be removed at any time soon. It's got vegetation on it, so it's pretty well stabilized. The stuff that I've been really pushing them about is, they had a big pile on the left-hand side back of the already inhabited condos on Compass Point. I said, you can't have this material blown into people's houses. So they've been doing a good job of.
Yeah, that, yeah, but it looks like that now they got piles on the opposite side of the street.
Yeah, they've always had the piles over there, but they have been moving it out pretty quick. I'll find out, I'll get a schedule for it and find out.
They have a giant pile of tail.
Yeah. I already asked them about that, he said that won't be moved at any time quick. What they're gonna do is probably, I'm gonna try and process it on site. I don't know what they're gonna process it to, but he says.
They're gonna run a crusher there with all those houses?
Well, they have all of the last refoundations, there's been nothing but ledge.
Do they need a, any kind of permit for that?
For what?
To run a crusher in there in a thickly settled area?
It would probably.
If you're gonna run it, it's gonna run for eight hours a day minimum.
Ooh. I would, I would.
And that'd be like Chinese water torture.
Yeah. I would imagine they'd need some kind of a permit, I mean, that's processing material. As other applicants in town have had to apply for permits, I would imagine if they're gonna process it on site, they're gonna have to have a permit to do so.
Make sure they're aware of that.
Yeah.
So you don't feel all your complaints when they start coming in, people freaking out that this crusher's running. That's constant, that's.
Yeah. I will put that on my, on my list when I have the conversation with regards to that with it.
Okay. All right, and the other issue is, we need to discuss is the ZBA fee schedule.
I do have a question about North Brown.
Oh, go ahead.
That sidewalk coming in there with the guardrail?
Yes.
Is that three feet wide?
The sidewalk?
Yeah. Coming in with that guardrail on the right-hand side, coming, you're coming off North Street?
When you're coming off North Street?
Yeah, on the right-hand side.
Sidewalk on the right-hand side? It's supposed to be four feet wide. ADA compliance.
I was just curious if it was three feet wide, so that, what I mean, it's not four feet. So I'm just curious how wide that is.
I, yeah. ADA compliance requires that to be 40 inches as well, obstructed. So ultimately, when the project is completion, when they're going through and doing their final covers and all that, it'll be watched very heavily.
The project's been going on since 2016, I think, is when it came alive, somewhere around there, 16 or 17.
Somewhere in there.
Yeah. I don't want them to come back and say, well, you never said anything about it, it's been there all this time.
I was looking.
It's something that you may want to look at.
Yeah. I've got this.
And I don't want to wait till the last minute to throw snowballs at them. It's something I happened to see when I was going in there, and I think it was because of all the vegetation that was growing out that made me look at it.
Well, that's also, I know you drive in, you know, if you went in there with that, that road by itself, because of the rapid embitterment, feels very narrow to begin with, so everything seems very take-ordered in there.
Yeah, unfortunately, I went in there with a 94 Honda Civic, which is very small. Good theory.
A 94?
I have a 94 Honda Civic, that was in excellent condition.
Excellent, yeah.
All right. No, it's not for sale.
So our next agenda item would be the zoning fees, and this seems to come up every, every time the post office increases their rate.
Thanks, Ken.
And it seems like, at least on a few occasions, we ended up short.
Yeah.
Because they had increased the certified mail.
Right.
And then we mail them regular mail to the abutters, saying, with a decision. So, Jen had sent us a, a letter here, saying what the, what the new rates are, and I'm wondering if we, if we couldn't approve something, that it's gonna be whatever the current fees are.
There's a second part to this, definitely, because what they used to do is take a $200 retainer check, hold on to that, and then get that, give that back and get another check. Now they just want to do a flat fee of $200 advertising fee as a flat rate.
Yeah.
So they're trying to, because the problem they, they run into periodically is now they don't get the second check. So it's kind of a cat and mouse game. This way here, they just paid the $200, that's the fee, and you're done.
That sounds more.
In some situations, though, 200 might not cover the certified mailing.
You have a conversation with Jen with regards to the mailing fees, the actual, or are they at 833 or whatever they're at now, 850?
853 or something?
I says, why does it not run concurrent with whatever the mailing fee is at the time? It seems like the mailing fees have been going up monthly at this point.
Yeah, it's often.
So, I mean, I said, you know, if you're given the application and they're coming back with the application, you could have a postage fee schedule for the month or whatever the post office decides it is, and say, this is the fee schedule now.
Yeah.
That's something the selectmen would have to vote on, not us.
I don't, I don't think, no, I don't think so.
No, but automatically, I mean.
It's gotta be a postage fee or something like that. I didn't get deep into it at that point, but I just made the mention to her, because, like you said, it seems like, you know, it sat off at 733 and it's already up to 8 something for the mailing cards.
Yeah, with 6 something not so long ago.
All right.
Yeah.
So if we were to say that the postage fee would be whatever the current postal.
The prevailing postal fee is the.
Yeah.
So, right here, so, this is the old fee schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Right, the new cost is now $8.53 per abutist.
Right.
So what they're saying in here is you're gonna have an application fee of $250, right? A certified mailing fee per the U.S. Post Office covenant list of $8.53, and advertisement fee of $200 made out to the town of Douglas.
Right.
And that's what it is. The way they were doing it before is you would give a, yeah, the 733 per the abutist, $200 check is returned when the invoice is received and a new check submitted. They're just simplifying it, and it's, it's a $200 advertisement.
You don't have too many abutters. This is still another 65 or whatever this is.
No, 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 you're missing this. The application fee is this, 250.
Right, okay.
The certified mailing, mailing fee per the U.S. Post Office current cost per abutist, right? So if you have 10 abutters.
Yep.
You're gonna pay $85, $85 and 30 cents.
Or whatever the current.
John only has two abutters, so he's gonna pay 16, 17 bucks and 6 cents, right? So, you're gonna still pay for all your abutters. It's a flat advertisement fee of 200 bucks. And what that's gonna do is, it's gonna cover all.
Put money back in from the advertisement.
There is no switching checks back and forth. That's what we're trying to get away from.
Away from, yeah.
It's too much of a problem. Could you follow that? The way it is now is you have the application fee, the abutters fee, the mailing list, and you have, you submit a check for $200. And then after they go through all this stuff, then they call you back up and say, all right, come back, give me another check, and I'm gonna give you back your $200 check. I know, it's all screwed up. So, what they want to do to simplify it is you're gonna have the $250 advertisement, uh, application fee. You're gonna pay per your abutters list, whatever you're required to have. You're gonna pay $8.53 per abutist to mail it out, and a flat fee of 200 bucks for advertisement, and that's it. There's no exchanging checks and all this other stuff. It just.
The only thing is that 853 is the number that's changed, ever changing.
Sure, right.
On this, and that's what Dan was trying to address, was the fact that it's gone from 733 at the last time to 853. Can it go with the prevailing, you know, statement of prevailing postal ratings?
Okay, so if you listen, and if the two of you has heard what I said, it says on the second sentence, "A certified mailing fee per the U.S. Post Office current cost", right? Currently, the cost is.
They gave the number.
Currently, the cost is $8.53. If it goes up to $9.10 tomorrow, that's the current cost. It's the current cost per, at the time of your application.
Well, that's pretty straightforward.
It's pretty straightforward, because where the confusion comes in, right? Prior to that, we actually had a figure in there, is that a certified mailing fee per the U.S. Office current cost of $7.33. They took the figure out and put current cost, so it's gonna be the current cost at the date of, time of application.
So if you was reading it, you just added the 853 at the end, it's not written in there?
No, it's on a sticky note. So, again, again, just, just.
Let's move on.
Again, just for, just for clarification, there's gonna be a flat fee of $250 for the application. There's a flat fee of $200 for the advertisement. Then the abutters list, whatever the current cost is at the time of application, which today is $8.53, is per abutters that you have on your list. So if you have 10, it's 10 times that. If you only have one, then it's only one.
Yeah, and right here in parentheses, it says, "Please verify amount with principal clerk."
Yep.
So it's telling you that the prices could change, depends on what it is at that time.
That works for me.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's simple.
It just simplifies it for the community development office. We got, it's a major problem for them to be chasing these checks back and forth. You already dropped off a check, I'm not going back down there again. So you're going back down there, or if they mail it back to you and you never come back, it's just a problem for, and that's why.
You think that people would come, they're coming in to get a, a, a change or whatever, get something approved.
Yeah.
So they, you should, it's, it should be on them.
It sounds simple, but it doesn't happen that way for, and she has, she's struggled with this quite a bit. She's brought up numerous.
Well, yeah, if that's the case, then.
So now it'll be, if we approve it, it'll be a flat advertisement fee of $200, a flat application fee of 250, and then your number of abutters times the current rate, which today is $8.53. If it goes up tomorrow, then it's that rate.
Yeah, right. That's common sense.
You go on a GIS and that'll tell you your, the circle of, of the people that you're referring to.
We have to get it from the assessor's office anyway.
Yeah, so, and it would be a quick one too, because it takes a second to go online and get it.